Good evening, everyone. Today is November 18th, 2019. The forty-seventh meeting of the Twenty-Third Council will come to order. Counselor Gibson is excused this evening and all other councilors are present and should be here shortly. Next, we are on a moment of silence and we have, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, in English, and as you know, we just passed at the last meeting to recite it in Spanish as well. And I, like many of my colleagues here, I think, don't necessarily know it, so we're going to learn it together. So if you want, I think we're going to put it on the overhead? So we have it on the overhead, and if the councilors want to get their cheat sheet, we'll get started. So Counselorego.
(inaudible)
You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the signup table. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. So we are now on Item Three, Proclamations and Presentations. Before we go on to that, Mr., our attorney, city attorney, Mr. Aguilat, has an announcement to make.
Madam President, counsel, the city clerk asked me to remind everybody that the early voting for the runoff election for Districts Two and Council Districts Two and Four starts tomorrow and runs through Saturday, December 7th, and Election Day is on Tuesday, December 10th.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. Will the folks from Rock Your Mox come down? Dr. Bear Shield, I believe, anyone else with you?
They actually have family market seats.
So you're the top of the show. Well, I hope there's nothing wrong. Well, thank you, Dr. Bear Shield. So last week, actually, was Rock Your Mox Week.
Yes.
And I attended a nice event at the Governor Bent Elementary School, which has a hundred Native American students. Really, it was great when they named all the tribes and pueblos and everybody, you know, each young person stood up, a hundred people, and then even some of the guests, of course, stood up or raised their hand. So it was really good. And, yeah, we're, our relationship with our indigenous people is very important to us, and we should remember that we're all standing or sitting on ancestral native lands and always remind ourselves of that. But let me read the proclamation, and then Dr. Bear Shield will have you speak and come on up and get the pro. So this is acknowledging Rock Your Mox Day and Rock Your Mox Week. And whereas Rock Your Mox is a worldwide Native American and indigenous people's movement uniting people throughout the world in recognition of Native American culture. And whereas Rock Your Mox Movement, the Rock Your Mox Movement, founded by Jessica J. Lynn Atsie of the Pueblo of Laguna, as a day of Native American solidarity connects Native Americans and indigenous people with each other by encouraging participants to wear moccasins for the day. And whereas in 2013, Jessica Atsie approached Melissa Sanchez of the Akama Laguna Pueblos and Emmett Schkeme Garcia of the Pueblo of Santa Anna, both of Emergence Productions, a local company specializing in Native American and indigenous performing arts and youth and cultural empowerment. And whereas the wearing of moccasins serves as a symbol of honor and acknowledgement of Native American and indigenous people and their significant contributions globally. And whereas Rock Your Mox Day is held annually and concurrently with November's National Native American Heritage Month observations in the United States. And whereas Rock Your Mox inspires Native and non-Native communities and organizations alike to foster awareness and recognition of Native American and indigenous culture, history, and arts through relevant educational initiatives, events, and projects. And whereas the City of Albuquerque's Office of Equity and Inclusion partnered with the National Indian Youth Council to increase Native American participation in the city's workforce to ensure better representation. And whereas the City of Albuquerque supports the Rock Your Mox Initiative and joins neighboring pueblos, other nations in New Mexico, and others throughout the world in this symbolic gesture aimed at recognizing and elevating Native American and indigenous people. So be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, that November 15th is Rock Your Mox Day, and November 9th through 16th is Rock Your Mox Week.
Awesome. I thank you, Madam President, the rest of the councilors, and Counselor Benton, we appreciate you on behalf of Native country, still serving as a Senior Development Director for the Gathered of Nations Pow Wow, and just want to commend all of you for being one of the most powerful voices in recognizing Native country from the beginning of this particular event, from that time. And we thank Counselor Benton and the rest of you for continuing to bring powerful lights on that which has been invented and created here in the Albuquerque area to allow us the opportunity to still have a voice and still be the tribes that are from the First Nations. And from the founder, Jessica, and the emergence team that took place in promoting this and bringing it together, had a loss in their family this morning and wish they could be here this morning, this afternoon. And so we're just wanting to say thank you to you guys, and we appreciate you guys for what you do for Native country and for the Pueblo tribes, the Apache tribes, and also for the Navajo Nation here in New Mexico. And we just want to say thank you, and we honor each of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from Social Innovation Strategies Group regarding an update on Phase Three of the Neighborhood Engagement Process. Mr. Eduardo Martinez and Everett Hill are here to present. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Thank you for having us here. As you stated, we want to give an update on Phase Three of the process. I'll give some overview and I'll turn over then to my colleague to talk through some of what we've heard, what we've learned. We started Phase Three of this process in May of 2019 and worked through October gathering input. Phase Three was really designed to be able to engage neighborhood groups individually and really began to try to hear from each of them in terms of some input they would have. That becomes information for you all to be able to utilize in your decision-making process as you move forward in updating the Neighborhood Association Recognition Ordinance. So through our outreach, we had a total of ninety-three hour-and-a-half convened conversations facilitated by one of our facilitative team with neighborhood groups, including neighborhood associations, homeowners' associations, some other groups. And from that, there were 1,741 distinct pieces of input, feedback that we got back, that we then worked to conduct an analysis to look at themes around some of the things that folks are saying are, whether they were challenges or things they'd like to see addressed in the update of the NARO. It's information that we were able to do a theming analysis around. And so I'll turn it over to my colleague Eduardo to talk a little bit more about what it is we actually learned.
Madam President, members of council, thank you for entertaining our presentation today. A couple of things about the theming process that came out of the Phase Three dialogues. First of all, the theming process is not unlike a ballot count. It's going through every bit of the data and looking at where the themes start to come together. And so in that process, you develop some overarching themes around what the community said in response to our questions. You also, in the process, will tend to lose some of the resolution of individuals' responses, but you'll still be able to sort out the overarching themes. I'll start out, we kind of grouped these into three areas. One is the themes that we heard most often. And first of all, I think generally everyone that we convened, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to the City of Albuquerque for taking the time and the effort to reach out and gather their feedback. Under the most common themes that came out of the process in this Phase Three, first of all, neighborhood associations and their leaders, they want a, really to strengthen the process and the communication, the engagement process that you have with them, and the communication process between the city and through ONC as well as with the neighborhood associations. So we, majority of our feedback really focused on, we hope the revision of the NARO ordinance really strengthens the process of engagement between neighborhood associations and the city. The issue of land use and zoning, and particularly the IDO, continued to come up in our conversations. We didn't focus specifically on those issues during our dialogues because most of that legislation, most of that work is covered through the IDO ordinance itself. But it's just an alert that it continued to come up during our dialogues, and so it continues to be an issue for neighborhood associations. Things like, and that arising from that, address sort of the conflicts or the competing language in the two ordinances between the NARO and the IDO. And then look at things in how you deal with land use disputes and conflict resolution as well. Notification came up in the discussion around the land use issues as well. Third one was provide resources, and I think important that most of the communities are looking for resources from the city and from ONC to help them build capacity and do their work and be a stronger partner with you in the city in building strong communities. So access to resources for communications, not just funding and maybe tools, but also a technical assistance to help them engage their work in a stronger way. Provide tools and trainings for their own board development and their operations. I think the Neighborhood Association leadership are very comfortable talking about the areas where they could do better and where they need assistance with their own development and their own capacity building. So they're looking for that support as well. And then there were some comments around as well, providing some actual funding supports for them to actually engage their residents in their districts. The third, the fourth one is focus very heavily on follow-through and follow-up. I think there's some frustration by communities about they don't know where to go, or they don't know what happens when they make a request for some mediation or some conflict resolution as well. So a lot of feedback from the community saying, we really want stronger follow-through and follow-up from the city on the areas that are important to this. The less common themes, which showed up about twenty-five to fifty percent of all the comments, and again, they were over seventeen-hundred individual comments, individual points made in these, probably closer to about twenty-five-hundred individual comments. But the less common ones, remove the barriers to participation. The issue of indemnification and insurance is important to them. I think neighborhood associations are concerned about whether or not, what the impact to them if they are, raise issues or advocate for specific topics. So they're hoping that the revision of the NARO ordinance at least considers what the impact of their participation would be as well. Help with mediating the disputes and then avoid any requirements in the revision of the ordinance that makes it harder for them to engage their constituents and/or to exist. So I think balancing out of helping them build their capacity without necessarily making it so stringent that it really affects their citizen engagement process. Make the ordinance itself easy to read. As we start this process, we asked everybody to read the ordinance before they came into session. I think we had a lot of feedback around, it doesn't really, it's not really helpful to our work the way it stands right now. So if not make it easier to read, then at least have some translation tools that really bring it home to the community as well. Ensure that, there were some comments as well that start looking at supporting boards so that they are doing a better job of recruiting and engaging all the residents in their districts, and then specifically deal with the issues of overlapping boundaries around specific neighborhood associations as well. And then the last one, which is less than a quarter of the responses, focused on a couple of things. Don't overcomplicate it. We did have some responses that said, if it's not broken, don't change it at all. And then there were some comments as well about clarifying the role of the coalitions and the HOAs in the process as well. The current ordinance isn't clear enough to their liking to that supports this piece, and so they would like some assistance with that. Require the association boards to ensure that their advocacy positions are responsive to a majority of the residents in their association and that their feedback is provided in a representative and a transparent manner. And then finally, that consider researching what's working well in other communities before you complete the rewrite of the NARO ordinance itself. So that I'm reading off the two-page summary, which is included in the larger report that was delivered today as well, and that's basically the summary of the Phase Three work.
Madam President, if I might, just to finish, as we went about this process, as Eduardo mentioned, people really were happy that the engagement was happening. And on behalf of myself and Eduardo and our team, who consisted of Jamie Wells, Lara Bryson, Antonio Almaestas, Barbara Garcia, and Dr. Rudy Garcia, who were really out there engaging communities to convene these conversations through this process, they were met with people who are really passionate and committed to their neighborhoods. They're committed to working in their communities and making things better as they are on the ground. And as Eduardo said, are really looking for, how do we best partner with the city so we can develop the capacities that we need, that we can create some other opportunities for other people to participate in being a part of what the associations are doing? And really, overall, a sense that we still need to build some trust between us and the city through all of these processes. But reaching out to each of those neighborhood associations, I think, was appreciated. And we understand that although this is what's here in our report, won't be the only thing that you all consider as you make updates. It's part of our ethos that the community's voice is a really important part of any process. And so we just wanted to say we've been very appreciative to be a part of this work, and thank you for allowing us to be part of it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any questions? Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. Hill and Mr. Martinez. So was it roughly a third? Is that about, what was the number, the percentage, I guess, of non-responding neighborhood associations or organization?
Madam Chair, Counselor Benton, there were about a third of the folks that we either tried to be in contact with, had some contact with, and may not, they may not have been able to respond to actually convene a conversation. And I think there, functionally, there were two things, two dynamics at play there. One is, we worked from an existing list of contacts that along the way, we were able to update a little bit. But as we moved through the process, some of the individuals who represent neighborhood associations changed throughout the process.
Sure.
And as we engage folks, again, these are really committed people working on behalf of their communities and trying to find the time to actually be able to engage and connect with them. It's part of that dynamic as well. But on the whole, we were able to engage about forty-two percent of the total number of associations, homeowner associations, that we reached out to.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Hill, Mr. Martinez, I want to thank you for your work. We gave you a task, and you went out and met with the different and various neighborhood associations and the homeowners' associations also, which I was glad to see, it was just not neighborhood associations. I think the work that you did was, it shows here in this report, but you know, now it's going to be up to us and to ONC to implement some of these recommendations and changes you guys have, you know, put forth. But I want to thank you for all of your work. You took this job very seriously, and you did a really good job. And because I had neighbors calling, some of the neighborhood association leaders calling me, saying that you guys are out there doing your job, and you guys are very thorough, and you basically opened the door to get their input. So really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Davis.
Excuse me, thank you, Madam President. And thank you both, gentlemen, for doing this work. I know it's been a long process. I wanted to follow up to Counselor Benton's question. And one of the reasons, or one of the concerns we've seen over the years is that sort of we have, in some neighborhoods have a very active group of people who become the neighborhood association, and then in other communities, we really do see that people just aren't as engaged. We've dealt with this around some of the other issues, particularly communities, like in the International District, on the Southwest Mesa, communities of different languages, for example. Did you capture any data perhaps about how many folks you talked to that, obviously, that don't participate in the process, or suggestions of how to include some of those? I know we talk about wanting more folks to be included, but I'm curious if we're only talking to the folks that are always there, or what we can do better about expanding our resources.
Madam President, Counselor Davis, yes, we did. There was a part of this, we talk about doing some flash polling. We actually convened groups in each of the quadrants and looked for people who are not currently engaged with a neighborhood or homeowners' association, just to begin to ask them the question of, are you engaged? If not, why not? And the answers kind of ran the gamut from, we haven't had a chance to be engaged, to we actually haven't been recruited by anyone. And some folks who said, we, you know, aren't incredibly aware of all of what's going on. So there are a number of, I mean, an ongoing challenge has been trying to attract people to participate at the association level. But I think part of what that flash polling tells us is there are people out there who could be engaged. And part of what we heard in the feedback is asking for some support and training and help in working with the cities. How exactly do we message to those folks and get to those folks and be able to explain to them the opportunity that's there?
Thanks. Thanks so much, and this is really great. I hope there's still some room under the contract, and maybe Mr. Ar can help us a little bit for us to follow up with you with some individual questions. I think this is really great to take a look at once we can dig in. So thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, guys, for the work that you've done. So this is Phase Three report. Was there a Phase One and Two that I probably didn't read? And did that target different areas? Because it seems like, at least in this report, it looks like you guys targeted the North Valley area, or that quadrant area?
Madam President, Counselor Borrego, actually, we, there was a Phase One and Two. Phase One was really focused on capturing and archiving everything that's happened before in efforts such as this. Phase Two, then, was focused on our ability to develop some surveys and to begin to try to understand what level of readiness and capacity the groups we would be reaching out to had, because that actually informed our outreach strategy for Phase Three. So those individuals or organizations that had less capacity, we started earlier in the process, because we knew it might take longer for them to be able to respond, and it might take a little bit longer for them to convene their groups. And those groups with higher levels of capacity, we were able to work into the process as we went along. In terms of the catchment area itself, it covered all of Albuquerque. So we worked from ONC's list, and we actually were able to engage folks in every quadrant, both through the convened conversations as well as the flash poll.
So pardon me, but there's, it says 222 neighborhood and homeowner. In my area alone, there's 42 neighborhood associations. So I thought there would be more than that.
Yeah. Madam President, Counselor Borrego, again, we worked from the list that ONC has, and as we worked through that list, the neighborhood associations and the homeowners' associations that we were able to engage through that process.
So these are registered?
Those are the ones that are represented in ONC's list.
Okay. And what about the coalitions? How did you work with the coalitions, or did you at this point?
So we actually engaged, we talk about utilizing and engaging at the basic unit of engagement, which for us was the Neighborhood Association itself. Many of the folks who are engaged at the coalition level are also the presidents or vice presidents of their neighborhood associations. So because we were reaching out to them directly, we were able to talk to them within this context, going, by engaging at the Neighborhood Association level itself and capturing their input at the same time.
So I guess the ultimate goal of this work would be that you, I just happen to be involved in the original ordinance of the Office of Neighborhood Coordination, and that was a long time ago. That was in the eighties. And that's why I'm asking the questions. So I guess the question is that you're going to be moving forward to develop a new ordinance or a revised ordinance? Is that kind of the goal?
Madam President, Counselor Borrego, we won't be writing a new ordinance.
But you'll be recommending?
But, yeah, we've helped to bring what we call a dataset, of language data, that you all can then triangulate with other pieces of information. But what this really does is help to bring the community's voice into your process. So to be able to have an ability to be informed by community as you're making those decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess there's no additional questions, but I just want to say thank you for all your work. I really appreciate it. I think this is really valuable as we move forward. So thank you.
Madam President, just real quickly. Sorry. Yeah, just, we want to take it, take the, you know, there's an expectation, of course, that we're going to all, as a community and as a council, everybody digest what you've put together, and that some of the more difficult issues that, in fact, issues that we're facing as we speak because of difficult language within the existing ordinance. And this is really helpful for us to have that in a very transparent manner, that discussion about what needs to be fixed within the ordinance. And I appreciate that very much, and your diligence in trying to get out there and to speak to people is very much appreciated, too. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
So next item is Item Four, Economic Development Discussion. There's none. Item Five, Administration Question and Answer Period. Councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Harris?
Well, we got a grocery seats email today, which seemed pretty interesting. Is that on the agenda?
No.
Madam President, the Department of Finance requested to make that presentation at our next meeting. By then, they should have more information on the five-year forecast, so.
Okay. Yeah, because it was sort of eye-popping what I received today. Okay, we'll wait in two weeks, that's fine. That's fine.
So seeing there are no questions, we'll move on to Item Six, the Journal. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I move approval of the November fourth Journal.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Motion passes. Item Seven, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to pull R-202 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and place it on the December second council agenda for action. R-202 is approving a non-binding intent to form a tax increment for development district comprised of the University of New Mexico's South Campus.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to pull O-85 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and place it on the December second council agenda for action. O-85 is amending the Metropolitan Redevelopment Agency Ordinance, Section fourteen dash eight dash four dash one, to include in all lease agreements for metropolitan redevelopment bond-funded projects an annual fee equivalent to ten percent of the annual abated property taxes on the incremental value, property valuation, and to direct the deposit of the fee into the MRA account.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I make a motion to pull EC-478 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and place it on the December second council agenda for final action. EC-478, the mayor's, is the mayor's recommendation of award to CR Golf LLC for concession services for the Los Altos Golf Course. I need a second. There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I make a motion to pull EC-486 out of Finance and Government Operations and place it on the December second council agenda for final action, for action, sorry. EC-486 is mayor's recommendation of award for personal, personnel hearing officers. There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I make a motion to amend the letter of introduction to place EC-402 on the December second council agenda for action instead of referring it to Finance and Government Operations. EC-502 is mayor's recommendation of award to Presbyterian Health Plan Incorporated for Counseling Services Employee Assistance Program reissue. There's, there's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R-211 and placing it on the December second council agenda for action. R-211 is adjusting the fiscal year 2019 appropriations for certain funds and programs to provide for actual expenditures and adjusting the fiscal year 2020 operating and capital appropriations. There's a motion in second. We need two-thirds of the counselors. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Madam President, can you explain, can someone explain why we're pulling all those out of Finance and Government, just so everybody knows?
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Winter, several items are being pulled from FGO Committee. The, the November twenty-fifth FGO Committee was canceled, and there are just a few items that need to be acted on before the end of December.
Counselor Harris.
Yes, and the November eleventh Finance Government Operations Committee was Veterans' Day, so we didn't have it. So then, the next available opportunity was the same week of Thanksgiving, and decided to give our staff a little bit less of a difficult work week that week.
Thank you. We are now on Item Eight, Reports of Committees. Counselor Benton.
Madam President, the Land use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, November thirteen, two thousand nine, and reports out the following item, in the matter of R-204, that it do not pass. That's R-204. I make, I move to accept the committee reports.
So there's, there's a motion in second to accept the committee report. Is there any discussion? I, I just want to say that I'm, I'm going to, to vote no. This was actually myself and, well, actually Counselor Winter's bill and my bill, and it was asking for just some additional community meetings and input for the sector plans in our community. And as a result of the community meetings, we would take recommendations, and at that point, we can, we could have acted on them or not. So for those reasons, I'm not going to support the committee report. So there's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Passes on. Five, three. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
Opposed, no, and raise your hand.
No.
No. Five, three.
No, five, four.
Four, four. Oh, so it failed? Oh, Counselor Gibson's not here.
Four, four.
Yes, we have that vote as a four-four, which means the motion fails.
Okay. So then, another motion on the floor. So I would make a motion that we actually...
Yes, so the appropriate action, Madam President, would be that you would place Item R-19204 on the agenda for the next council meeting, per our rules. And that only requires a vote of four counselors, regardless of how many are present today.
So I would do that in the form of a motion. So is there a second? There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes, raise your hand.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
So what was that? I didn't capture it. Four, four?
Madam President, that was a four-four vote. That motion passes.
So the motion passes? Oh, because we only, we needed the four. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Madam President. I just want to clarify, the rule for this specific motion requires only four counselors vote in the affirmative.
Okay.
As, in, you know, in contrast to our other types of votes.
Okay. Thank you. So then, the next item is deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we defer Item R-155, a nuisance substandard dwelling or structure in need of abatement at six hundred Dallas Northeast. I move a deferral until, actually, can we do a sixty-day on this, Ms. Yara? Our January meeting, Madam President, whenever that would be.
So there's a motion in second for a sixty-day deferral. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I second that. So R-178 is amending the adopted capital implementation program of the city of Albuquerque by supplementing current appropriations for the Adenali Crestview Bluff Open Space Land Acquisition. I move deferral until December second. There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor, I will defer to Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is CS-189?
Yes.
Right. Okay. Yeah, so the CS-189 is amending the composition of the Board of Housing Commissioners for the Albuquerque Housing Authority. I move deferral until December second.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. R-201, requiring the Department of Municipal Development to install speed humps on Dover Street Northwest to improve public safety. We are having a public meeting, so I would like to move deferral until December second.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on Item Nine, Consent Agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Hearing no changes. I just want to make, oh, go ahead.
Madam President, I just want to make a comment, if that's okay before...
Oh, sure.
I just want to acknowledge and say thank you to the administration. I noticed that Ms. Gaddis is listed as a nominee for the Development Commission. I think it's an excellent addition that we started including our local iconic Central Avenue small businesses to Development Commission. I think this is a really good positive step forward. I just want to acknowledge that we're doing that and including those folks in these new conversations about what the next generation of our city looks like, and so I want to appreciate that, and thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. I also wanted to acknowledge Fred Mondragon, who is being appointed to the Development Commission. And I think Fred worked on the Development Commission many years ago, and I'm glad to see that you're still interested. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you. And with that, I just want to say that for the individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board of commission, please stand up, if you're in the audience. We all just want to thank you for your willingness to serve.
With that, Madam President, I move approval of the consent agenda.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you all. Our next item is Item Ten, General Public Comments. There will be a two-minute time limit on the, the light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, and then the light will turn yellow, and the bell will ring indicating you have thirty seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, the light will turn red to indicate that your time is up. So our first set of speakers are Mr. Alvarez, Don Schrader, Rudolph Serano, followed by Richard Martinez. Welcome, Mr. Alvarez.
Good evening, folks. Before I start my speech, I would like to say thank you to all the establishments that made Veterans' Day a very good day for us. The bad thing is, the weather was very bad, and all the people that work for these establishments. Thank you. I had a speech already made up for tonight, but I encountered something else that's very important, that I feel is important for everyone that lives in Albuquerque. I ran into a meeting that was being done at the, one of the senior citizens at Highland about officers trying to, try to cope with people that come in, like refugees, try to communicate. But I feel that not only the refugees that come into Albuquerque should we be able to communicate with them, but we should be able to communicate with everyone that lives in Albuquerque. Just because somebody breaks the law or comes out of the apartment or a home with a knife doesn't mean that it's open season to shoot them down. When I was a police officer, I never had a taser. I never had a beanbag rifle. And a lot of times, the situations that I encountered had different ways of solving them. Getting on my radio for backup, calling other people to help. And I don't seek why, we can't do this now with the time that we're in, that we have a lot of tools in our disposal. The young lady that got shot twenty-eight times three months ago, where was the individual to be able to talk to her or try to get more help, to try to let her drop the knife instead of shooting her twenty-eight times? When I was an officer and I went through training, they told us that three times was an overkill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. And I just want to say that that unfortunate shooting occurred at the county, that wasn't a state, it wasn't as, I mean, a city, APD, sorry.
Oh, I know, I know that for a fact. But it's, all of us together can accomplish a better lifestyle for all of us.
Absolutely. Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Rudolph Serano.
If we were a mother in Afghanistan and our child was murdered by a U.S. soldier, would we suffer less agony if the U.S. Commander in Chief was a black Democrat Obama instead of the white supremacist Republican Trump? For forty years, regardless who is president, I have paid no federal income tax for war. Almost half of federal income tax goes for past, present, and future U.S. wars. Why would I pay tax to put young men and women in battle where they either kill or get killed? Where they murder someone who might have been their close friend if they had grown up together on the same street? Why would I pay tax to seduce, groom, bait, recruit youth into this nation's most dangerous cult, most violent gang? To be so poisoned with official lies? Sent to steal the oil and resources of other nations for filthy rich corporations and billionaires? U.S. soldiers become professional hired thieves and killers to steal and murder on command with no conscience? I enjoy living simply, far below the federal income taxable level. I refuse, I refuse to pay for war.
Thank you, Mr. Serano.
Good evening, Ms. Clarice Peña, counselors, all. Well, I, I'm thinking, you know, like, I came and asked for some money to, to get some ideas going, and there is the word, you know, that I don't know how to do business. So I decide to, you know, to, to break it apart, and taking advantage of Breaking Bad, you know, I'm thinking in, making Breaking Good, you know, which is the story of crime and corruption in the city of Albuquerque for the last thirty years. It's the story of how I turned half a billion dollars through thirty years to create equality between Chicanos and whites, into Mexicans and Chicanos, and then bringing women into power, creating the Christianity in the, in the South Valley. So it's going to take me sometimes more than two minutes. I don't know if you guys, you know, want to share, you know, like, an extra minute, but this is going to be the setting. I'm going to set it from here, and then we're going to produce it outside, and hopefully we can hit the hundred eighty millions that Breaking Bad hit, you know? And what you're going to learn is, everybody that knows me out there, I don't care if it's Jewish mafia, if it's Italian mafia, if it's Mexican mafia, if it's, you call it Greek mafia, they all know me for being a man of business. So it's going to be strictly business. It's on federal records. Yeah, you can go to national security and bring it out. You will see that I don't make one penny or help in your city to be what it is right now. You will say that I was honest all the time. I have to deal with everybody because nobody knew how to make business at those times. And I can tell you, in those days, there was only eight kills a year. Now we have that to the square, and that's because, you know, you're hanging with the wrong crowd. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, followed by Howard Hirsch, followed by Michael Poson.
Good evening, Madam President and the counselors. My name's Richard Martinez. I'm the president of the Citizens Information Committee of Martinez Town, CICM for short. This is the area bounded by Lomas on the north, Martin Luther King on the south, I-25 on the east, and Broadway on the west. On behalf of our spokesperson, Frank Martinez, and the Board of Directors of the Citizens Information Committee of Martinez Town, which is a duly-recognized neighborhood association of South Martinez Town, we want to express our support for Council Bill Number R-19206, sponsored by Counselor Peña, specifically under Section Two, Broadway Corridor Projects. These projects will enhance the Camino Real National Historic Trail and will resolve longstanding infrastructure issues such as traffic, storm drainage, and pedestrian walkability that have adversely affected our historical revitalization efforts. In addition, it will also provide for upgrading the affordable housing stock in our neighborhood that is in desperate need of revitalization. We urge your support for the tourism and economic development impact that these projects will have in the area surrounding downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Hirsch? And as I call your name, if you can make your way to the front, there's some seats available so that we can kind of move a little bit more quicker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak tonight about closed captioning. You know, it's amazing when I hear some... know, it's amazing when I hear some people say you want closed captioning because it's a convenience. I need to ask you, I need to ask them. Is braille a convenience to someone who is blind? Is a handicap ramp a convenience for somebody who is wheelchair-bound? Or an enlarged bathroom? No, it's not a convenience. Some people say you could get by on this. Can't get by. A lot of times, you can't get by unless you rely on somebody else. And I think as public servants, you want the public to be self-reliant, especially if there's a public service announcement, an emergency. And we all know that there's been too many emergencies of late. So, you know, you might hear opposition, people saying, well, I've got to train my staff. That's what staff meanings are for. If you gather everybody before the business opens or afterwards and show them how to operate a remote, as I said a couple of weeks ago, there's no problem. And also, in a lot of businesses, you remember the days of yore when you paid for the atmosphere. I'm thinking of restaurants right now. Just imagine how many more people would find it comfortable, nice, not only to sample the food, but enjoy the atmosphere and a quiet environment. And if there's something important, like you see right now, it comes up on the screen. You don't have to tap somebody. You don't have, and a lot of time to say what just happened. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael, followed by Steve Kramer, followed by Joshua Graves.
Good evening. My name is Michael Posen and I am the Programs Administrator for New Mexico Youth Soccer. I am also a soccer coach of two youth teams and a coach with the Olympic Development Program. My job as a Programs Administrator involves running various tournaments and programs for New Mexico Youth Soccer. Our programs are currently very limited due to the overcrowding at the Bernalillo Soccer Complex. The solution to this is simple and difficult. All we need is a complex in order to bid and host other regional and national competitions. As my organization became aware of this fact, we realized we needed to get involved in a process politically that would allow us to build another facility for the children. We became involved and active participants for the county's Youth Sports Commission in which we have provided insight and support for a year with the goal that all the youth sports programs in the local, state, and government entities would be able to work together to create a badly needed sports complex. After a year of our involvement with this group, we started to see some progress with the Mesa del Sol Regional Outdoor Sports Complex. In fact, the county is set to start developing a single high-level field in January that breaks ground. That came from county funds that were able to be put together. The benefits of Mesa del Sol are that it's shovel-ready among many other benefits. There is no land that needs to be purchased, it's just simply ready. The 32 fields that we need for these regional and national events that are mentioned in R-19207 could easily be built in two years. The hotels are there, everything we need is there. As far as we can tell, R-19206 and 207 both mention the West Side as the location that you have chosen. I implore you to reconsider. At the very least, please involve us in the discussions. We have reached out to everyone on the council and received no communications regarding these committees or discussions that are going on. We know what we need to do for these regional and national events and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer, followed by Joshua Groves, followed by Gloria Faber, I think it says. It's either an H or a B.
It's a B.
Hi.
Hi, Madam President, councilmembers. My name is Steve Kramer. I'm a former commissioner at the New Mexico Soccer Association. I helped run the New Mexico Rush Soccer Club, former Lobo, former professional soccer player, and heavily involved coaching. Mr. Posen said most of what I was going to say and said it very eloquently. I just want to echo his sentiments. If you're choosing between a location, the proposed location on the West Side versus Mesa del Sol, I would urge you to look carefully at the benefits and the shortcomings of each. And you'll find that the Mesa del Sol is by far the superior location. Both locations will be convenient for different parts of the city, people who live in different parts of the city. I'm not advocating that the east side of the river needs more parks than the west side of the river. We need more parks everywhere. We actually, we have a crisis. We all know it. Parks are overcrowded, they're overused. And I'm grateful that the city is considering spending money to increase our park space. The overriding factor is Mesa del Sol will more thoroughly solve the crisis because you can build way more fields, approximately 10 more fields, than you can at the other location. That in turn will be fiscally responsible, and I know councilmembers are all about fiscal responsibility. You're going to bring in out-of-state dollars. This state and this city needs out-of-state dollars. You cannot do that on a complex that only has 10 fields. You just can't do it. So for those two reasons, it more thoroughly solves the space crisis and it's fiscally responsible. I would really urge you to look at the Mesa del Sol project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joshua Graves?
Hi, City Council. My name's Joshua Groves. I'm an implant. I'm obviously not from around these parts. But I came here 20 years ago, fell in love with the city and the people that live here, and decided to stay. And during those 20 years, I was fortunate enough to serve as the Technical Director for New Mexico Youth Soccer Association. Part of my job was to travel around the city, the state, the region, and the United States to hold and be involved in youth soccer development activities and coach development activities. When you've had the benefit of traveling around the country and around the region, to see the facilities that other states and other kids in other states have access to, it becomes very, very clear the pressing need to provide better facilities for the youth in New Mexico. And I understand that there's a conversation about where those facilities could be built. And sometimes in these conversations, I believe the piece that's missed is not just where, but when. Significantly, if you're looking at West Side facilities and Mesa del Sol as an alternative, it's really important that we understand that those facilities would provide opportunities for players for practice, not just tournament events that take place on weekends. And if they are, if it's practice, they must be accessible to kids from all over the town. And really, the only place where you can put a facility like that, that will give access to everybody in the city, is in a central location such as Mesa del Sol. So I really encourage you to take a close examination at that option. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Gloria Faber, followed by Bill Blair, followed by Philip.
Good evening. Thank you again for allowing me two minutes to speak. I'm Gloria Faber. I'm the Executive Director for New Mexico Youth Soccer. Again, I want to reiterate that there is a tremendous need for soccer fields and multipurpose fields in our city. And New Mexico Youth Soccer got involved in this project with Mesa del Sol because of that need. And we've, again, been working on this for a little over a year. For us, it's soccer fields that we want. We want to be able to host events that we turn down continually. We know that for regional events, we need to have at least 22 soccer fields to bid those events, and for national events, even more so. So our goal, when we started looking at facilities, was the size of the parcel of land so that we could grow into at least 22 fields and beyond. Mesa del Sol has 32 fields that are proposed. And for us, it's shovel-ready and something that we can at least begin on or hang our hats on or have hope for within the next couple of years. I had the pleasure of meeting your assistant, Elaine Romero, this evening. She comes from a soccer family as well, I'm sorry, Counselor Sanchez. And she indicated that maybe I misspoke at the last meeting, saying that I represented everyone from New Mexico Youth Soccer. I want to say that I do represent our Board of Directors. Our Board of Directors has informed me to speak about our needs, and they also believe that the Mesa del Sol project is shovel-ready and something that we can move on very quickly. So I ask you again to at least engage the soccer community in conversation about what would be the best location and what our needs are. So far, there's been some from Counselor Davis, thank you for that. I just ask the other councilors to engage us as well. We do have the largest youth organization in the city of Albuquerque. Again, that's 6,300 kids, 600 coaches, 400 referees. So please, I ask you to reach out to us and let us be part of the conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Blair, followed by Philip, I think it says Plake or Blake, I can't tell, and then Adam Cherry.
Madam President, councilors, thanks for giving me this opportunity to chat with you from the football aspect regarding the Mesa del Sol project and the possibility of additional fields. Currently, we have six fields that we play our major games on. It's our main venue. We have 2,600 boys and girls playing tackle football along with 650 cheerleaders. It's a great venue. It's really open. It's really accessible. There's a lot of amenities. We actually hold a state tournament here. We actually hold a regional tournament here. We use those, that venue not only for our normal league play on a weekend, but also for these tournaments. And the reason why Mesa del Sol is such a great venue for that is we have the hotels, really right up the street. We have the restaurants off of Gibson. When we have a host events, the way the venue is laid out, we have concessions there, we have people selling apparel. It's wide open and it's airy. The nice thing about Mesa del Sol, everyone said it already, it's shovel-ready. It's completely shovel-ready and it's ready to go. One thing that's really, really good about it, it's huge. And when you go out to Mesa del Sol and you see six fields, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Currently, the whole plan, there's over 600 acres. Over 600 acres out at Mesa del Sol. It's a huge venue, shovel-ready, the land is owned. I just, you know, would like for you to consider to have the new 10 fields, go to Mesa del Sol. It's already been said, we need practice parks throughout the city. There is no doubt whatsoever. Everybody struggles to find a place to practice. We view Mesa del Sol as that venue that kids can go to and play on a weekend and know they have great grass all the time. And when people come in from out of town, they realize when the Hall of Fame came and won in our regional tournament, they said this is a great venue. Keep up the good work. So appreciate you having given me the opportunity. Thanks again.
Thank you. Philip, followed by Adam Cherry, followed by Steve Frazier, followed by former Commissioner De La Cruz.
Madam President, councilors, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. My name is Philip Plake. I'm the current president of the New Mexico Youth Football League, or YAFL. I've also been coaching the league for 20 years. In my 20 years coaching in the league, I've been played in 15 regional or national tournaments. I'm actually going to one for Thanksgiving weekend, playing in the national tournament in Vegas. And I know one of the things I've noticed in these years of coaching these other tournaments in regions, major cities, is our lack of regional facility for us to hold tournaments. Over my years of coaching, like I said, I figured that the best facilities have always three things in common. The first thing is parking, obviously. Next is access to and from the freeway and access to hotels and restaurants. I think the Mesa del Sol project incorporates all three of these factors. Parking is already there because it's established because of the concert venue. It has great access to the freeway and to the big ice. You can pretty much get anywhere in Albuquerque. And it has great access to hotels and restaurants. I think one major factor that nobody has said yet, and hopefully that we hit on, that Mesa del Sol displays is it has the best view of our mountains, which makes Albuquerque proud. One of the things that we always display is our mountains. You can't get a better view. Honestly, if you go out there and you're coaching a football game, I was coaching one yesterday. I played in the state tournament yesterday. And it's almost a thing of beauty just watching a game of football with those mountains right behind you. So thank you guys for your time and the opportunity, and please consider Mesa del Sol.
Adam?
Madam President, councilors, thank you for having me. My name is Adam Cherry. I'm a lifelong resident of Albuquerque. I'm a local business owner. I was a much better athlete back in the day in my head than I am today, certainly. And I have the distinct honor of being a volunteer for what I think is a great organization. I think in all things that we do in life, volunteer work is one of those things that really fulfills us. I've had the pleasure of having a couple of teams. I have three children. All three of them are involved in the New Mexico Young American Football League and Cheer organization. Our family gets to be together every weekend in an event, right, that I think really builds the character of the youth of our city. And the youth that we have in this sport, in both football and cheer, are varied. They come from all corners of the city. They come from our northern partners in Rio Rancho and from our partners to the south in Valencia County. And we all get to come together to build character and quality characteristics within our youth at a young age. I know that the families would love to be together, but people with multiple kids sometimes have to go to different venues to watch their children play. I'm a good proponent, or a big proponent, of the Mesa del Sol complex because it allows our youth and the families to come together in one location and really develop the future of our city starting at a young age. I think that sports is a great outlet for all of our youth. There's one thing that I know is that we've been able to play with our All-Star Games and the regional tournaments with and versus kids from around the city. And there's nothing better than seeing the respect that our kids get for their peers from any part of the city by getting to play together. And I think this is a great opportunity to give our youth a chance to play different sports, but at a single venue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Frazier?
Madam President, members of the council, I'm not going to repeat the things that I said two weeks ago, but I had some thoughts and some experiences since I spoke to the council two weeks ago, and I want to share those with you. When the meeting was over, I went out in the hall and took the ramp up to the parking lot. Back when I was only 80 years old, it wasn't that difficult to take upstairs, but it's not that easy now. And so having a ramp there was an accommodation that certainly was appreciated. Had I been in a wheelchair, it would have been even more appreciated. When I arrived here this evening, I had to run up to the ninth floor for a minute, so I took the elevator. And I felt the braille there on the button and was thinking, gee, isn't this great? Somebody who is blind can still figure out which floor is which in this elevator just by touching this button. And of course, sitting here in this meeting, again, I've got the captions and your hearing loop to accommodate the fact that I have a pretty serious hearing loss. But during the week, I went out to lunch with some family and friends. We went into a restaurant, and they had four TV sets playing. Now, apparently, somebody had asked to have the captions turned on on one. It was a football game, and there were captions there. There was also a newscast on one of them. And there are things going on right now in the country that are kind of interesting if you're watching the news, but there was no captioning. And I was thinking to myself, why should I have to ask for them to turn the captions on, especially when somebody already had them turned on for another program? But that's the purpose of the bill that you're going to be discussing this evening, is making this accommodation available without having to request it, just as accommodations are available to people in wheelchairs, people who are blind, people with other disabilities that don't have to request the accommodation. So again, I appreciate the fact that the city of Albuquerque and this council is concerned with the problems that the hard-of-hearing and the deaf face. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Good evening, Madam President and councilors. I'm here this evening on behalf of Mesa del Sol. I am working for them and representing them related to the regional park. What I'm not here to talk about is the need for fields around the city, because the reality is that they are needed everywhere. Every family and every child should be able to play somewhere in their community and not have to travel too far for weekly practices or weekend tournaments. But the reality is that we have long needed a regional complex, a complex that serves the entire city and the entire region, the tri-quad state area. And so, councilors, this evening, and as you make this decision in the near future, please consider that we have been sorely lacking this, a facility of this nature, and that this can be the beginning of creating a venue that would serve the entire metro area as well as other states. area as well as other states, and at the same time, help the city. Mesa del Sol is in the city of Albuquerque. The park itself holds a lease with the county via the state of New Mexico through the state land office. And I will tell you this, the citizenry of Albuquerque wants the city and the county to work together. They want the tax dollars, tax dollars to work in tandem to benefit everyone. So, I encourage you to consider that, I encourage you to work with the county. I believe that the county, I can't speak for them, but I believe that they are ready to work with the city of Albuquerque, because the reality is that the city of Albuquerque is where most of the population lives. It is who has the greatest needs. When I was the Director of Parks and Recreation, it was, it was a need that was there then. There were too many games happening in the little parks and the little neighborhoods that were nothing but trouble for the local residents, blocking parking and that sort of thing every single week. So, I encourage you to consider Mesa del Sol as a regional park, but don't forget all the needs of parks in all the areas of the city. Thank you, councilors.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Commissioner, for being here. And thank you to all the other folks in the audience for being here. I want to acknowledge and just be sure we are transparent about our process today. I want to thank Counselor Sanchez for introducing the legislation. We sort of glossed through our procedural pieces there. But two new pieces of legislation that give us until December 19th to bring this question back to the city council. I think listening to folks that they want to have some more input. And this is really a process that's helped us really look at what the soccer and the youth sports infrastructure needs are in our city. I think there's clearly room and we hear from folks that there's a, clearly a need for this, there's clearly a need to expand for this, to create a regional hub, to draw more dollars to Albuquerque. And there's needs for more neighborhood and regional, city-based parks and indoor facilities that are different. I think we found a lot of issues and opportunities for the city to invest with partners, and I appreciate the Counselor Sanchez for bringing that together. And I appreciate the administration for sending out those letters to our potential partners over the last few weeks, asking others to step up so that the city doesn't have to shoulder the whole burden, asking who's ready to help us do that, whether it's the county or United, APS, or whomever. I think we've actually got a good process here for taking public input. I appreciate everyone for coming down to help us lay that foundation, tell us what that would look like for your neighborhood or for your issue and your sports. I think I have a preference in how this might go, but I also see an opportunity, not just for us to do one project, but for us to really lay the plan for long-term, for us to do a lot of them. And I want to encourage everyone else to continue and bring us that input, and I appreciate the counselor for bringing that process forward.
Counselor Sanchez, no applause, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you, Counselor Davis, for the clarification. We will not be voting on this issue tonight. What is on the agenda tonight is the legislative priorities, and one of the things that the city is looking at is building a major complex working through the state for the United. That location, we've not decided on. That would probably be a great place for a downtown stadium, but that has not been decided on. The issue right now is the issue that we are discussing, is the practicing fields for the United and other additional sports complexes for a regional tournament. Again, that will be voted, discussed and probably voted on in the next couple, next four weeks, but we don't, we still have some time. So, I appreciate everyone for coming out and voicing their opinion and their concerns. I know that there's been a lot of involvement and many people for many years have been working on these initiatives. And I've been advocating for the west side, but at the same time, I was also a Burnley County Commissioner when the state land office said, "We're going to give you 600 acres of property." And that also opened up that, that possibility for a big sports venue at Mesa del Sol. But appreciate everyone for coming out, and we will continue to work together on what is the best site for our community and our city.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
Oh, you know, I was, I was traveling last week and I was flying back from Phoenix, and I was sitting next to a gentleman who was talking about Albuquerque to me and things that we have and things that we don't have. And what struck me was, one of the things that he said to me was, you know, "We don't have professional sports facilities." And, you know, my ears rang. The other thing, of course, for me is that we don't have a Symphony Hall, which we should. But back in the 90s, Mesa del Sol, actually, that's when it first came through, and I actually worked on Mesa del Sol. Both the Rank II and the Rank III Plan and the, and the subsequent site plans, and I think Art De La Cruz, you were the Parks Director at the time, and we put in the six soccer fields, and there were supposed to actually be nine, but I don't know why we only ended up with six. And then the, the concert facility went in also. So, it's been, you know, a long time, but, you know, I think that this council's job is to really look at what is going to make the biggest impact to the city and where our, our resources are going to make, you know, have the biggest impact for our kids down the line, because all of us will probably get old eventually. Hopefully not, but we will. And, but, you know, it will, it will have an impact on the lives of many, many people and, and the way that our city continues to grow. And I'm glad that, you know, we have this process that we're going through to look at sort of objectively, what is the best venue for, or where would these venues be the most beneficial to our public? And I think that that's the challenge that we have. And, you know, I think that, and I asked a lot of questions at the last meeting about access, because I did work on Mesa del Sol back then. And so, I guess, you know, some of the things that I'm going to be interested in is how is the state going to be involved in terms of, you know, access if, if it is Mesa del Sol, or even if it's on the west side? Because right now, we have a lot of traffic issues on the west side as well. So, these are things that I think we all need to be very sort of conscientious about and, and sort of look to the future as to, you know, how do we grow our city so that we use our resources to make the biggest impact? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Francesco, followed by Geraldine Amato, followed by Justin Chaney.
Madam President, councilors, this is a little bit out of left field, but I just came across an article about public, public transportation. And as we know, if it's on the internet, it must be true. So, I'm thinking the source is legitimate, it's the KRQE News article that I came across, that it costs the city $42 million. And at the end of the day, as of last year, it cost 42 million, but we made 3 million in fares, which basically means it costs us 30 million, 39 million dollars. And so, we're so close to being all-in, why don't we just have bragging rights and say free transportation for everyone? I mean, we're right there, we're almost there. If we take the 1 million that it costs to take those who are not as fortunate as us from where they are to the west-side shelter, that's a million dollars that they say it costs every year just for transportation alone. So, if we take that out of there, it's only 2 million. Maybe we could trim a fat here and there. And before you know it, it's free for everybody. And because the art project is going into effect in a few days, it's going to be free for the holiday season, which is great. Everyone who's been struggling, they're, all those businesses that were affected during the construction phase, they're going to get a lot more traffic. Why not maybe just extend that a little bit instead of 30 days, maybe until spring? And see if maybe free can be a thing? And since I have a few seconds left, thank you all for sticking around. You all had the chance to like run for the hills, but you decided to stick around, so thank you, congratulations. And wow, you know, even on your best day, you could find the cure for cancer that also makes you lose weight, and you'll still have people complaining about it, but you still chose to stick around, so thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, our next speaker is Ms. Geraldine Amato.
I got it now. Good evening. I have had some interesting experiences during the last few months. One was an assault in, at noonday from a woman I thought was a streetwalker on the corner of Central and Amherst, when a man in the street told me that probably was an undercover cop that works Central Avenue to pick up John soliciting prostitutes, just redirected as a hit woman. It sounded fantastic to me. But then I'm thinking, maybe it's related to my encounter with narco-terrorists inside a hospital. When I reviewed, I mean, I don't know how extensive and what is happening around here, but when I was in this hospital and I stumbled across, I wasn't looking for anything, the confiscating of parts of opioids from inpatients, before the prescription runs out, they take the last part of it. I accidentally noticed that. And then I found out that there are these people in hospitals called hospitalists. And I ran across one named Ramos, an MDT, like a ranking commando. He can order folks with ranks less than him to do things just like in the military. And I found something in my medical records, which is make my blood pressure go up. I didn't want to even review the medical record because I know that these people wanted to malign me, and they had the nerve to fabricate and put things in my medical record. On page 39, I only reviewed about 40 pages, it says, "Patient not personally seen or examined, but Justin R. White, who was a nurse, had some training in psychiatry." See, I don't even get a chance to review this.
Thank you, Ms. Amato. Justin?
Any questions? You don't even want to hear it, do you? The last two agenda items on the last two meetings are the more important ones, and yet they're put last on the agenda, I suppose it's to discourage any public comment on those issues.
Thank you, Ms. Amato. Justin, you're the next speaker.
The psychiatric...
Ms. Amato.
Yeah, I know, you don't want to hear it. I don't appreciate attempts made on my life for things you don't want to hear about.
Your time is up, Ms. Amato.
Yeah, well, I have a right to protest, even though there's a aura in this area, this federal enclave, that no one should protest anything and speak up about anything without getting harassed.
A warning, Ms. Amato. Justin?
Hello?
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam President, council members, Justin Chaney represents the Albuquerque Area Firefighters. I want to thank President Pena for your leadership on R-19206. The firefighters stand in support of this, specifically with the reference to the brush truck, Brush 16. I want to thank Counselor Jones for supporting that. You've been an advocate for Brush 16 for the east side of the town, northeast sites for the foothills of Albuquerque, so thank you for that. Also want to thank Counselor Harris for the budget priority for Station 12. That's something you've been advocating for a while, so we appreciate all your guys' leadership on that. So, thank you all, appreciate your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tyler Adams, followed by Don Regan, followed by Jim Tilly.
First off, I would like to say thank you, Madam President, and the members of council for this opportunity. My name is Tyler Anthony Adams, and I'm a current student at CNM. I'm going for my bachelor's degree in nursing, and I'm with the goal of being a nurse practitioner. I'm also on staff at Vertical Church of Albuquerque as a pastoral intern. And I would like to address to the council this evening would be the quality of the roads in our city and as a concerned Albuquerque resident. On average, according to TRIP, which is a nonprofit organization that exercises national transportation research, that was founded in 1971, they have done research on our roads, and here in Albuquerque, they have concluded that the average Albuquerque driver spends $1,800 a year on repairs to their vehicles due to the horrible roads that we have. Now, that may not seem like a lot to a few of you, but the average person makes up to 1,679 an hour, which comes to $2,686 per month, or $32,237 in a year. There are a lot of people that actually don't even make that much. So, these costs of having to make these repairs on their vehicles is devastating for those who don't make that much. When someone, when someone's car breaks down, it makes it hard for them to get to work, which leads to a loss of a job or an employment, debt, et cetera. It's just kind of a snowball effect, and it really affects our state and the people that live in it, which, which, which in the end makes a big, big effect on the state. We have the worst roads in the state, and according to TRIP, 34% of our roads are in poor condition. And in the yearly, the yearly average, we spend about $1,800 on our cars. Some of us can't afford to take the, take that expense out of our monthly income. The Gibson off-ramp, there's a huge hole, and I just want to be a concerned resident and ask that we would get the ball rolling and figuring out what we can do about bettering our roads. Because we want our city to grow and our population to grow, but we don't want to be an expense to the people that are coming into our city to try to look for opportunity to grow.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Don Regan, followed by Jim Tilly.
President Pena and councilors, I'm Dan Regan. I'm with NAPHEYS, Neighborhood Association, and District 4 Coalition. We live in a strange age where divisiveness and discord run rampant and animosity can develop in a matter of a heartbeat. It's gotten worse in the last three years, but long, long before 2016, many, if not most of us Americans saw things as either right or wrong, as either black or white, as either you're with us or against us, either good or evil, either us or them. For our city and for you as council, the IDO has often pitted a triad of folks as adversaries, the developers, the neighborhood communities, the city. We've all been on differing pages, and to the extent that it has played out as a zero-sum game, it hasn't worked well. I'd like tonight to declare that that approach is understandable, but it's dumb and self-defeating. I propose that we go back to an appreciation of our whole universe as being a balanced dance between polar realities, and that neither pole can be dismissed or treated as less than without damage being done. For instance, intelligible sound is impossible without silence, because sound is a wave. The top, the crest is sound, the trough is silence. The same is true for light. Light's impossible without darkness. You can't have one without the other. It's a wave also. Take electricity. Try running this meeting right now without electricity in this room. Take out either the positive or the negative, and you got problems.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Jim Tilly, followed by Tad Nemenski, followed by our final speaker of the evening, Maureen Cook, under general public comment, I should say.
President Pena, councilors, my name is Jim Tilly. I'm the vice chairman of the Burnley County Youth Sports Commission, and I am the chairman of the steering committee that's studying the Mesa del Sol Regional Outdoor Sports Complex. First, I want to thank all of you for your efforts. The last, last four, five, six years, we've seen consistent push from you all and from the county commission to increase the number of sports facilities in Albuquerque, and we're very appreciative. We're excited about continuing that push. Since I'm the 20th speaker, and there have been several speakers about Mesa del Sol, I'll keep this pretty brief. I want to make two points that have not been made, or have not been completely filled out. First, I think that the city is going to receive a letter from the county tomorrow that details that the county's committed a million dollars to this project, and at their December county commission meeting, they will consider committing additional funding from the general fund to this project. And secondly, it will be the number two priority for the county in capital outlay with the legislature. The second point that I'd like to make, and then I'll get, I'll sit down, it is important that we think of this not just as a community facility, and it will be, have a significant impact on our children, but also that it can be a nationally relevant facility almost immediately. Since the project is shovel-ready, and you've heard that term several times tonight, since the project is shovel-ready, we can very... the project is shovel-ready, we can very quickly get this to a point where it is a nationally relevant complex in the next few years. And that brings economic development, it brings opportunity for our children to compete at the best levels, and it brings recognition to the city of Albuquerque as a place to live and raise families. Thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you for your efforts the last couple of years.
Thank you. Mr. Nemenski?
My name, Ted Nemenski. Well, I am completely over amazed, you know, how people want Mesa del Sol. Just look at this beautiful intersection, Interstate 25 and Rio Bravo. How easy in and out, simple as that. West side congested already. I am surprised commissioners for Mesa del Sol, Dela Cruz. Anyway, let me go to another subject. New Mexico, I spoke so many times, is near borough or borough, every category. Why, I never did ask. Answer is simple. Seventy percent land in New Mexico owned by governments. Now, six to thirds were employed by governments, only one third by private industry. Government never created wealth, only private. Look at, spoke about transit, now railroad, how profitable they are. Just take it, that's what government does it. Take it from taxpayer and give it to own establishment. So, now, that's all what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Cook is our final speaker this evening. Maureen, going once, going twice. So, that ends general public comment. We are now on announcements. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, November 25th, is canceled. The next FGO meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 9th.
Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Madam President. There'll be a rail yards advisory board meeting on Wednesday, November 20th, at eleven-thirty in the Department of Finance and Administrative Services Budget Conference Room on the eleventh floor of City Hall.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. There will be an Albuquerque-Burnaleal County Government Commission meeting on Thursday, the 21st, at 5:00 PM in these chambers.
There will be an Albuquerque-Burnaleal County Water Utility Authority meeting on Wednesday, November 20th, at 5:00 PM in the Vincent E. Greggo Chambers. And I just want to make one other announcement, is Counselor Sanchez just shared with me on KOAT that I hadn't heard, but there was, the Low Rider Exhibition at the airport is getting some national recognition, so that's pretty awesome. International, I'm sorry. Next item is item fourteen, Final Actions. Counselor Benton and Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is adopting, O-79 is adopting zoning conversion rules for properties in Batch Two of the Phase Two Zoning Conversion Effort as directed by City Council Resolution R-1829, and updating the official zoning map. I move a do-pass.
Second.
So, there's a motion and a second, and it looks like we have some amendments. So, your amendment labeled A will be floor amendment number one. Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll ask the staff to explain this.
Madam Chair, Counselor Benton, yes, there are four amendments tonight labeled A through D. I can go through those one at a time. Amendment A proposes to remove three properties from this voluntary zoning conversion process. As property owners were able to opt into the process, they are also able to opt out. And this particular amendment covers property owners who wish to no longer be in the process.
Thank you. So, Counselor Benton, did you want to...
Yes, I'll move floor amendment number one.
So, there's a motion and a second for floor amendment number one, which was formally labeled A. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on B.
Madam President?
Hold on one second. Ms. Naranjo, we're going to go through all the amendments, and then we'll have the discussion, and I have you down as for public comment. So, we are now on B.
Madam President, Counselor Benton, amendment B proposes to add in a property to the process. This was a property that applied to the planning department to be considered, and upon initial review by the planning department, they deemed that they didn't meet one of the criteria that they had to meet to be in this process. This property owner has since reached out to city council staff and has provided sufficient evidence to show that they do, in fact, meet the criteria necessary to be considered. And so, this proposes to add them to the large batch of properties.
So, B would be floor amendment number two. Counselor Benton?
Yes, I'll move floor amendment number two.
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number two. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on C.
Madam President, amendment labeled C proposes to remove two properties from the process. To be eligible for this process, a property owner had to prove that they actually owned the property. In these two instances, these property owners could not submit that evidence, and without that evidence, we cannot accept them into the process.
Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Schultz, so, they aren't fully documented yet with their application. What's, where does this go upon being removed?
Madam President, Counselor Benton, there are a few options for these property owners moving forward. Moving into the future, they always have the option to come request a zone map amendment on their own. However, there will also be a Batch Three of these properties coming to the council, hopefully within the next couple of months. And if these property owners can provide sufficient evidence before that time, we can amend them into Batch Three.
So, we can keep them in the queue, if you will?
Madam President, Counselor Benton, yes.
I move floor amendment number three, Madam Chair, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number three. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now at D.
Madam President, amendment D proposes to strike two properties for consideration. To be consistent with Batch One, we asked the planning department to conduct additional analyses on any properties that were under the non-conforming criteria. And upon further analysis, there are two properties where that legal nonconformity could not be proven, meaning that as far as the city is concerned, the use on their property is legal, and, I'm sorry, illegal at the moment. And so, we have to remove them from this process to, so that we don't legalize an illegal nonconformity.
So, then that would be floor amendment number four. Counselor Benton?
I move floor amendment number four.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. We are back on the bill as amended. Counselor Benton and Jones. Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Ms. Loretta Naranjo Lopez.
Good evening, President and councilors. My name is Loretta Naranjo Lopez. I'm the president of the Santa Barbara-Martinis Town Neighborhood Association, and we're members of Albuquerque Interfaith. The Santa Barbara-Martinis Town Neighborhood Association is here tonight to state that our neighborhood continues to experience racism in the planning and zoning of the Martinez Town-Santa Barbara neighborhood, a community of color and low income. The zoning conversion would not have happened without the leadership in the neighborhood going door-to-door explaining to neighbors why their historic residential neighborhood is different than the other neighborhoods, and how they can protect their homes. We want to thank you, councilors Penya and Winter, for recommending R-19204 to provide a sector plan process. We appreciate that, and which will give the community a voice. The zoning established in the IDO changes our neighborhood to MX mixed-use, and this zone is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. The MX also displaces our residents and gentifies the neighborhood. The Santa Barbara-Martinis Town was told that we would be first to review our sector plan and update the plan to protect the neighborhood, and so we would like to make sure that this happens through the community planning area process that the city has provided. The zoning conversion process needs to be opened again for those that did not meet the deadline, and I would thank you for this consideration. I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and you have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So, now we are back on the bill as amended. Counselor, unless any of the other councilors have any questions, Counselor Benton and Jones.
I'll just quickly say something, then let Counselor Jones close. Yeah, this process has been working the way we anticipated it would work. Yeah, there are hiccups along the way where somebody doesn't have all their paperwork ready yet to actually get through the process. I agree with Ms. Naranjo Lopez that there's a pent-up demand for certain types of conversions, but, you know, we have to talk with that. We still need to move the rest of the process along as we consider those needs. So, with that, you know, extensive delay in what's been committed to by the council. So, we will move forward. I appreciate all the work that everybody's done on the council and the administrative side to get this all together, and we'll keep working with the community to make improvements.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Schultz, I just heard you mention, and I want to be sure we clarify for everybody else that, and for us as well, this is sort of those batch, sort of cleanup, for lack of a better term, pieces. But every property owner still retains the right through the IDO to submit for his own map amendment or for some other type of amendment if their use is non-conforming or found to be currently illegal. Is that correct?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, that's absolutely correct. Any property owner at any time can come in and make that request. And additionally, as we do get closer to the community planning area assessment process, we will also be reviewing zoning at that time as well.
And that'll happen on a rotating basis around the city, if I recall right, every three or four, four or five years?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, yes. The planning department will be in each community every four years.
Thank you for reminding me. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Benton and Jones to close.
Thank you, Madam President. This is, of course, confusing and hard, and a lot of work, and our planning department and our city council planning department puts hours and hours into this to make sure that people do get an opportunity to have the zoning that they need and they're allowed to have per some of the changes that were made here, and keep everybody as happy and as, to not damage their properties or them personally. So, this is just the beginning. As we've explained over and over, the entire comprehensive plan in IDO is a constantly changing, it's designed to be constantly changing as properties change and use changes and the world rotates. So, we'll be seeing some more of these. This batch went very smoothly. There are a huge number of them. And our planning staff who did this and made sure they all met the requirements to do this, I commend them and thank them for all the hours and hours of work that put in it. And with that, I would like to move approval.
So, there's a motion and a second for O-79 as amended. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for co-sponsoring this bill with me. This particular bill is O-86, amending Chapter 13 of the Revised Ordinances of Albuquerque to add a new section requiring persons owning or managing a place of business of public accommodations to activate closed captioning on television receivers. And this bill, just for the background for the council, was actually initiated by a group of individuals who come from the hearing impaired community and have an organized group. And basically, we looked at cities across the country that have adopted a similar ordinance, and we kind of fine-tuned an ordinance that was more sort of unique to Albuquerque. And what we do in this ordinance is we allow for a warning. And as you know, on your TV set and your remote, you can choose a closed captioning function, and it's really that simple, is to change that setting on your remote control. And so, basically, we allow a business to have a warning, and then subsequent to that, there are fines if they do not comply. So, that's, I recommend approval.
I'll second that. We have several people signed up to speak, so Mr. Steve Fraser, followed by Norman Dawson, followed by Tad Nemenski, followed by George Gom, followed by Roy Miller.
Madam President, members of the council, I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I want to give you just a primer on hearing loss, because that's germane to the bill that you're discussing. Hearing loss is really an invisible disability. A person can be deaf, and you don't really realize it unless you see them start talking using American Sign Language. But there are a lot of preconceptions about hearing. One is that all you have to do is get hearing aids if you're hard of hearing, and you're going to hear again. Well, that may be true of eyeglasses and vision, but it's not true of hearing aids. The effective reach of the microphones and a hearing aid is about eight feet. If there's sound coming from further than that, there are some portions of that sound that are not going to be understood. Also, people have the idea that hearing loss is something that affects the elderly, and that certainly is true. But sixty-five percent of the people in this country with a measurable hearing loss are below the age of sixty-five. So, we're talking about an awful lot of people. Forty-eight million people in America are believed to have a measurable hearing loss. The vast majority of people, although they could, who are hard of hearing, could benefit from hearing aids, but only about twenty percent of them actually have hearing aids. So, they need some other kind of help, and that comes to them in a lot of places through the use of captioning. So, I'm going to, again, encourage you to vote to pass this bill and make Albuquerque another one of the nation's more progressive cities that is concerned about people with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Norman Dawson?
Madam President, members of the council, I am a person who is deaf. I've got hearing impairments. I was five years old, and I've gone through a number of technological iterations, starting with hearing aids and T coils and teletype rider devices and other devices to help me here. Now, I've got cochlear implants wired directly into my brain. I was introduced to closed captioning when I was deaf, and I was also introduced to sign language. I used to carry around this two-hundred-dollar machine so I could take it to people's homes and plug it into the TVs before they had this automatic device called closed captioning. So, I appreciate the council putting in the T coil that's here and captioning this device here. But I've gone into a couple of businesses where I've said, "Oh, would you mind captioning?" And they said, "Oh, well, I don't know how to do it." I said, "Let me show you, let me see your remote. I'll show you how to do it." Boom, boom. Got it fixed for them a couple of times, and they were very appreciative of me showing them how to do that. But I went into one business that had like fifteen or sixteen or twenty different monitors clear around the restaurant, and I said, "Hey, you know, ADA says you need to have these captions." He says, "Well, you know, our service provider says, no, we don't." So, it'd be really nice to have this bill passed, because the technology, if it's there, it's great, but sometimes it requires an entity like the city of Albuquerque and other agencies to put this into effect to make this happen so that we don't have to confront people or embarrass people. We'd like to participate. We'd like to be involved, and one way for us to do that is to have access to the technology that is already available and just make it happen. So, I would really appreciate you taking this bill all the way forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Tad Nemenski? Tad, going once. George Gom, or Gomi?
Thank you for your time. I was born with a hearing loss. I've been using closed captioning since I was a child. But I want to point out that closed captioning, the first time we saw it was about 1972, Julia Child's cooking show. And that's the first time we saw it on national public television. And that's the first time we saw it on national public television. And now we're in 2019, and we're still having this conversation about getting access to closed captioning, and that befuddles me. It confuses me. Why are we still having this conversation about something that's obviously relevant and important to our community and serves to engage and allow us to engage in various scenarios, whether it's politics, sports, who's winning Dancing With The Stars, whatnot, in public spaces? And when I hear that there's some concern about that, I just don't understand that. I am in support of this, and I think it is important and imperative that we move forward with it.
Thank you. Mr. Miller? Roy Miller? He will be the final speaker under O 86.
I thank you for allowing me to come back a second time and address this Scotty. I'm Dr. Roy Miller. I'm the current president of the Association of Late Decked Adults. I won't repeat what I talked about a couple of weeks ago. It's already entered, most of that had to do with the benefits of captioning. Instead, I'm going to tell you a story about a second-class citizen named Roy. You know, when I go to a restaurant and the T G is turned on, but there are no captions, I don't understand what is being said, but you don't have to ask for the captions to be turned on, but I do. When I go into a Skort Skar to watch my favorite game of the week, and the T G is on, but there are no captions, I have to request that those captions be turned on, in full knowledge that many people working there won't know how to do it. But you don't have to do that. And when I go to a meeting of the city council, like I am tonight, or to any other government or body, in order to participate as a citizen in the whole like of this community, I have to look at the captions on the screens, but you don't. I often feel like I'm a second-class citizen, like because I'm being treated very differently from most of the people in this audience. I would hope that you would support the closed captioning bill, not because it's going to cost you a cent. It's totally free, and it's an opportunity for you to, quote, "do what's right at absolutely no cost to the city." And I wish all of your decisions were that easy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. So that was the final speaker. Are there any questions, comments from councilors? If not, Councilor Borrego to close.
Thank you, councilors. I want to thank, oh, did you have a comment? Councilors?
Yeah, before we close, I have one question. I know that many of the sports bars here in Albuquerque have multiple TVs. Is each one of those TVs going to be required to have closed captioning? Or say there's, you know, the same game on on several different channels, or will it just be maybe one or two TVs?
Chris Melendres, are you here?
Nicole.
Where Nicole? Do you want to answer?
Madam President, Councilor Sanchez, would you, would you mind repeating that question?
Say like at Buffalo Wild Wings, when you would go to a sporting venue, there are several TVs surrounding the facility. Would each and every one of those TVs be required to have closed captioning? Or would it be, say that there's the game on on four different TVs? Is it going to be one or two TVs that will be required?
Madam President, Councilor Sanchez, the way that the bill is written is that if there are multiple televisions broadcasting, that only one of those televisions is required to have the closed captioning on.
And for Dr. Miller, I want to thank you for coming down, doctor. You should never feel like a second-class citizen because of a disability, and I will be supporting this legislation. I think this is going to be good for those individuals that are challenged with hearing. I myself hear fine, but I know within time I will probably start losing some of my hearing, and closed captioning would be an advantage for myself and others, but I'm really pleased that this council does have closed captioning. I think it's an important tool for those individuals that can follow a meeting or hear what's going on in that meeting, but this will be a benefit, I think, to the entire community where no one feels like a second-class citizen.
Thank you, Councilor Borrego.
I was just going to close by saying the right to, you know, public accommodation is, is part of our, our national law. And I think that, you know, for private businesses, you know, we're not trying to dictate to them, we're just asking that a simple accommodation be made that gives people equal access, whether they're hearing impaired or blind, or they have other types of, without making them feel like they're, you know, they have some special designation. I think that just making people feel like they can participate and be a part of our society is really important. I want to thank Nicole, and I want to thank Chris Melendres, our attorney, and the Civil Rights Office, and Winter Torres, and all of you guys, Susan Behill, my assistant, for helping us to write this bill and do the research. And thank you to the, the group that approached me. It's been a year almost. Thank you so much.
Councilor Benton, I had put it to Councilor Borrego to close, but go ahead, Councilor Benton.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to thank Councilor Borrego for bringing this forward and doing so much work on it. You know, the Americans with Disabilities Act anticipated that we would have to really pick away, and we're still picking away at it after the mid-'90s. But these are the kind of moves that we, we can make as a city in advance and make our city an inclusive place for everyone, so thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I'll say something, Councilor Borrego, since I opened the floor back up, is I just want to say I was happy to co-sponsor it. As everyone knows, you know, I have a person who has several disabilities and another person who is in a wheelchair, and, you know, the more we do to provide access, the better off we'll be, not just for those citizens, but as a city as a whole. So Councilor Borrego to close. Your support. So there's a motion and second for O 86. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on the final item of the evening, R 206, establishing the legislative and budget priorities for the City of Albuquerque for the 2020 New Mexico State Legislature. I move a due pass.
Second.
And we have a floor substitute that is, I guess, in your, in the iPads? Okay. So it's in the iPads, so I would move the floor sub.
Second.
There's a motion and second for the floor sub to R 206. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. So we are back on the bill as substituted. Any questions from the councilors? We have one person signed up to speak, Francesco.
Thank you, Madam President, councilors. Part of the bill is about community centers, and unless I'm mistaken, each one of you has a community center in your district. And my hope is, if you could please make it part of the conversation, maybe a little post that notes somewhere about a shuttle, some sort of transportation. Just this past week, I was at a local business, and someone who doesn't have the luxury that we do to go where we want to go, when we want to go, he was handicapped, and he just wanted to go to West Side Shelter. And the only way for him to do that was to have wonderful people like this gentleman show up, big, huge red truck, ambulance, this and this and that. Even if I was to call Uber, would be like super expensive, but Uber would be cheap compared to what it costs to get this one gentleman to the West Side Center. And the thing that was ironic, this business that he walked into asking for help was right next to a bus stop, and we only have a dollar fares in this city, and he didn't even have a dollar to get to where he needed to go. And he was only one stop away from the actual shuttle that's in place right now, but he still was unable to do that. So it costs thousands of dollars, and it's not an isolated incident. So maybe, we're still paying for it, but we're paying for it like through the nose. I mean, it's like $10,000, $15,000 just for that one ride. Maybe while we're talking about these community centers, we can please maybe consider somehow or another to put some sort of a catch in there. And before I go, thank you for being great because this whole, like, election cycle, everybody talks in like sound bites, and it's like they talk about crime, and they talk about homelessness, and nobody had answers. And last session, you guys stepped up and did the right thing because there was a business who was not being a good neighbor, and you all unanimously stood. And I know we're not supposed to applause, no disrespect, but I applaud you all for stepping up and doing right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, and thanks for bringing that up. That sounds like a really specific situation for a person with a disability, and a homeless person needs special services, but we do offer Sunvan services for folks that are handicapped that can schedule those special deliveries. But more important, she's not here tonight with us, but I want to acknowledge the work that Councilor Gibson did, and for the administration to work to roll out the new crisis helpline that came out today. I think it's 768help, if I remember, announced today, and it's a way for some, anyone to call during the day. For anyone that needs specialized services with actual, like, navigators for homeless services on the line, they can live work with service providers to find those services so that our public safety folks are not the only resource available. It's a big deal in the way we deal with our homeless, and I'm excited to see that roll out. And she's not here tonight, but we ought to acknowledge Councilor Gibson's leadership on that and getting that started. So hopefully, we can start sharing that story effective today, and that would help your, your business and your friend do that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that was the final, the only speaker and the final speaker, but I just want to say, Councilor Borrego just asked me a question about the bill substitute, and I'll have Tom talk a little bit about it. It says that the administration proposed the floor sub, but actually, they worked with, with me to, to draft it, so I don't know if that's just a technical thing or what. So what we were doing, and before you talk about the specifics of it, I just want to say that, you know, I really want to thank the, the IGR committee and obviously the administration working together to put this together. You know, it's really important, as you all know, that we have so, such tremendous need in the City of Albuquerque, and all of us, nine councilors individually, have so many more priorities than, than we could actually list on this. So it's a really difficult decision to kind of narrow it down to three projects, which was requested of each of the councilors. And, you know, with the administration putting in their input and talking about our, not just our neighborhood priority projects, but our regionally significant projects, those are important, and that really aligns with public safety because it's important, especially when we're talking about the homeless shelter, you know, when we're asking our state legislatures for money, we don't just ask the ones from the City of Albuquerque, we ask for our neighboring communities because these projects have regional significance where it would actually, many people from outside the City of Albuquerque and Burnaleal County come and utilize these services that we have. So I think it's a, it's a good bill, and I know we had kind of divided it up before, but putting it all in one and just kind of listing them, I think it really, it helped the process along because we all wanted to be in the, the top three, and, you know, it's, that's difficult to do. So Tom, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Council President Penya, members of the council, basically, Councilor Penya summed it up pretty well. The administration floor sub just takes what Councilor Penya said, and they take the five critical regional impact, regional priorities, and just place them up front. But everybody's in the same equal category, and then everybody, and then from there forward, everything is just listed alphabetically.
And I'll just add one last thing, is that this year, we decided not to add an amount next to these projects because that, over the years, has created some confusion because it's not the price tag of the specific projects, but it's an amount that we're requesting to try to fill a void. So with that, I urge your support for R 206. Oh, no, never mind. I don't urge your support yet. I move that the rules be suspended to vote on R 206 this evening, and we need two-thirds of the council.
Second.
So there's a motion and second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Back on the bill as substituted. I urge your support. Motion in the second, already established. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. There being no further business. This meeting is adjourned.